So, before we start the meeting tonight, we'd like to ask everybody to turn their cellphones to the library or off. And then to remind everybody that we're going to have an invocation tonight given by a local pastor. The invocation is for the benefit of the council. We invite anybody that would like to come and give an invocation to come at any time. You can participate in the invocation if you want to, or you don't have to. And the religious views that you hear tonight are not necessarily anybody in this room, they're just the person that has come here to give the invocation. And whether or not to participate will not have any bearing on the business you've come here to do. So with that, I'd like us all to stand. The last branch will lead us into the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we came, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing, Rick Wright will come tonight. Before you do, Rick, we've had a death in our business family down here. Pam in our office with Julie, her mother passed away. And I'd like to remember her, Pam's family. And we also have my former fireman, Gene Harvey, that passed away yesterday or today. And I'd like to remember his family.
Sure. That's great. Now, we thank you for tonight, and we just thank you for this opportunity we have. We thank you for our freedoms, now that we can come together in freedom, God, and express our opinions, beliefs in God. And I thank you for our council that we have before us who is looking out for our city, for the things going on amongst people of Connersville. And I pray that you would entrust them, give them wisdom and discernment. God has made many things on their plates. And God, I pray that you would just help them to make the right decisions, have the right timing, and to be wise for them. Pray that you would just be at this time with these families that were mentioned, the Harvey family. And God, we certainly don't understand why, but we know who, Lord, we know that you can help them through this time of grief. And God, I pray for Pam and Julia, and God, the family represented there. God, I pray that you would just wrap your arms around them, help them through this grieving time that they be able to get through. And just be with all the families. I pray this be an opportunity where family would be drawn close together and be able to have that perception of family and the need they are for one another, to be an encouragement. And God, we do pray for the business that's conducted tonight. God, we just pray for wisdom, we pray for discernment. God, we pray your protection over this council, God. Protect their families in health needs. God, I pray you protect them from any discouragement and all the things, God, I'm sure that they face, now that you would uphold them and give them strength. We ask these things in your name.
Thank you. Failed to mention also, that would have been Sandy's mother, Erica's Pam and Sandy, our sisters. Sandy worked for many years in the clerk treasury office, so I wanted to mention that. This being our regular meeting, we'll ask for roll call.
Councilwoman Rish?
Present.
Councilwoman Weber?
Present.
Councilwoman Chomel?
Here.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilwoman Creach?
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Here.
Let the record show that one council person is missing, but we have six. We have a forum, and we are able to do business. With that, we have the reading of the minutes of the last council meeting. What's your pleasure?
I'm going to accept the minutes as read.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes as they were presented to the council members. Are there any additions or corrections? None appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are put in as read. Thank you so much. Reverend Rick Wright, you're going to request money for the storm rally, so come and make your best deal, I guess.
Well, good evening. I want to come before you tonight on behalf of the storm. This is our sixth year.
Rick, will you tell them where you're from and what you're doing?
Sure. I'm from here, Connersville, and I am student minister at Calvary Baptist Church, and doing that for the past almost seven years, and have directed the storm for six years. And so, in this six years, I started in 2008, and our goal was to have a passion to reach out to our community, to celebrate our students. And it's an avenue of celebration for the students through the help of community sponsors, including the city this past year, who helped us sponsor 200 students. We had the bowl and the arena is filled with inflatables, mechanical bowl, carnival games, and just presenting an atmosphere of excitement for our kids. Kind of at the start of this vision, kept hearing, there's nothing in Connersville, there's nothing for students to do in Connersville. And so, I wanted to provide something with all those things, great entertainment, and a chance for our community to love our teens. And so, with included in that, we also are feeding in what we had last year, 1,500 students, and it has grown. The first storm we saw, 375, the next year, 900 to 1,200, and the last two years, we've seen just over 1,500. And so, it takes a lot to feed that many students. And one of the problems we've seen in kind of in reflection with other youth leaders in our city is a problem of a need for food, a hunger problem in our area. And so, this year, we decided we're going to feed the students twice. When they get there, it's approximately around dinnertime, 5:00, it's ordered to feed them when they get in. And then, of course, one of the big draws is 500 pounds of pizza, and so, we'll send them out with pizza as well. We don't want any student in our town to feel like they can't be a part of the storm, and so, from the start, we said we're going to do this event free as long as we can do it. And in order to do that, we need community support. It ends up costing about $10 per student to run the event, and so, we want to help be this avenue of change in the way that our youth think. And so, I'd like to ask this board if it would be their pleasure to help us again this year, to sponsor some students for the storm.
How much did the city put into it last year?
$2,000.
That's what you're asking for this year?
Whatever you can get.
My best pitch? Whatever I can get.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we donate $2,000.
A second.
We got a motion on the floor that we need $2,000. Where do you want that to come from, General? Riverboat?
Would you leave it to me?
Riverboat.
I'd say Riverboat.
Riverboat.
Rick, what are the ages of these students?
7th through 12th grade.
Okay. And it begins around 5:00 P.M.?
5:00 P.M., and it's over by 10:00 P.M.
There's some moral instruction with it too, isn't there? Some teaching and lectures and testimonies and stuff like that.
Our speaker, Bill Ballinger, who's bringing a concert, was a man who, really, a bounce-back story. He was in prison, he and his wife, his kids taken away, and bounced back from that, and really has a message that the teens will get to hear. And they'll get to hear that in the schools as well.
You receive quite a bit of community support also, don't you?
Yeah. Last year, because of the great need, and as I said, it's about $10 a student, you're looking around $15,000. And so, that comes by great support from businesses, personal sponsors, churches, and of course, great sponsorship from the city.
Okay. Well, with your motion, if you're ready, that means we would have a public hearing on the 19th of February to allow that money to be spent for that. That's in plenty of time, because you're not having that till April. Any other discussion? Any discussion out there? Advertise for a public hearing. Okay, all those in favor of advertising for a public hearing on the 19th of February, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. That means we'll have a public hearing on the 19th on the $2,000, and then they'll vote to appropriate the money.
Okay.
Yes or no? They don't have to, but they usually do when they go to have a public hearing. Okay?
Great, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming twice today, Rick. We appreciate it. Okay, we have resolution 2013-03. This is for monies. Telephone for the police.
It's one of their cellphones. Some of them have things that the city doesn't pay for, and they reimburse us.
Okay, so it's money coming back?
Yep. Mr. Mayor?
I make a motion.
Is this a month's worth of money, or a year, or how much money?
It's probably about a month, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's all for you.
A second.
Got a motion on the floor that we receive this money back into the general fund reimbursement, $455.74. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have a resolution 2013-04. This resolution came about when Walmart built up on State Road 1. John and I went after trying to get some sidewalks up there, and they informed John from Endot that because of the speed limit, and there was not enough area on the side of the highway right of way, that it could not be done. So, when Mr. Plumb was elected to the county council, again, he brought the issue up, I think at his first meeting. And he lives on 30th Street, and I live on 37th Street. People walk up and down State Road 1, they cross the field, someone's going to get killed there, and the night, it's dark. So, last week, we established a committee consisting of myself, John Baker, and Mr. Plumb from the county council. We have a county commissioner, Barton Barker. Who else we got working with us, John?
Phil McDaniel, area plan commissioner, he's one of the key people.
We have another meeting on Wednesday this week. We got the manager of Walmart coming, and we're going to pursue this. We're going to push real hard to get a sidewalk.
We don't have a copy of that. We don't have a copy of that.
You don't?
No. She's gone to give.
Okay. This was done real late today. All this is, is a resolution asking the area planning to ask for this, and then it would be brought back to us if they recommend it. We're asking them to recommend it to the city and county. You want to hold on that a little bit until you have it in your hands?
Right.
Let's bypass that a little bit here. And go to pending ordinance 2991. This is a public hearing on the Columbia Avenue project. Now, this is what I gave you last week. This is done from the traffic study that was done on Snyder Corporation, did this for us. Once you pass this, I will give this to Mr. Job, and Mr. Job will then begin to make all the traffic flowing this way by changing the stop signs and doing all the things. I have not heard one word on this at our office. Have any of you had any input? Have you all had a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Mayor, this is the one that you told us a couple of weeks ago. You folks had contacted the local business over there, and they didn't like to see this.
They talked to both businesses, they talked to every resident in this area. Everybody has been contacted and told what is going on. Now, I'm not saying that once it's done, you might not get some flack, but it's what they want done in order to make it safe over there to conduct business. I will say, both of those companies are hiring now. They've hired again this week, and things are going good, so we're trying to do everything we can to make it an environment over there that is pro-business.
I think you'll find that back when those trucks, those tractor trailers, were like 45 feet long, and you'll find out now, they're 53.
You're right.
And that's making a big difference, and sticking out on the street.
I have a couple of questions. Did you say that those crosswalks would be raised like speed bumps?
I think, I think the ordinance calls for some of that. It's not a speed bump, it's a speed hump.
Okay. The other question is, how do you enforce a 15 mile an hour speed limit?
Well...
I think the speed limit on Grant's 30, and I haven't seen a car going 30 up Grant since I've lived there.
That will be Mr. Counselor's responsibility when it first goes into effect.
And they'll run you down on Grand Avenue trying to get in your car.
Well, you hear that?
And Western, and Indiana.
If you know that, why don't you do something?
Try to get them out there, Mayor.
We bought you new radar guns. What are you doing with us, screwing on them?
I'm sorry. They have to do it in between the other calls, so I'll get on them and see if they can run a little more radar.
It is responsibility in forces.
State Highway Department's Highway, state police are stopping them in front of our house at least once a week. They're male and female.
State's been down here quite a bit working, right?
Yes.
15's just barely crawling.
15 is only in that area where they're running their forklifts and stuff.
It's all the way up Columbia Avenue, all the way to 18th Street.
Hopefully, I guess if we get a 15, maybe we can hold them to 20.
25?
But anyway, this ordinance, excuse me, 2991, is ready for first reading tonight. That's right, we passed on first. We're ready for final reading tonight, if you would like to.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm going to accept pending ordinance 29, I'm going.
We got a motion on the floor to go ahead and accept pending ordinance 2991 on third and final reading, which will adopt it, and we put it into action. Any further discussion? Any discussion from anybody out there? None appearing, we'll have a roll call vote, since it's such an important ordinance.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chomel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
That's 100% of six people. That passes the ordinance on third and final reading. And David, I'll give you this, and I also have the book with the study, so you'll know what signs to change, and you can begin making that. Now, we don't have to publish this, because the penalties are already in effect.
There are no additional penalties for this ordinance.
If we can get the state to make the truck route, we'd be all set for those industries.
We're working on that.
Yes.
That'd be great. That'd be a great deal.
Okay. On resolution 2013-04, the sidewalk to Walmart, you all have it before you now, I won't give you a chance to read it. What this would do is it would make all future growth that is commercial, that we, they have to put a sidewalk there, part of building their business. And that's only fair, we should have done this before Walmart ever built there. We should have insisted before they can go there, they have a sidewalk, but we never realized the foot traffic we were going to have.
So, this isn't new, and they didn't help the Walmart situation?
It can't. Their grandfather, they, although I think they're willing to work with us, but all future, is that right, John? This is all future.
Right.
It will help us, because most of that along the area is future.
Will it, does it, going to have enough of a setback to meet the state?
I know, but we're going to address that. We got some ideas of how we're going to address that, and this committee is going to work on it, and they'll be bringing that to you.
Mr. Mayor, would this be a, I want to word this properly, a city-county effort, financial?
Hopefully, not financially. We're trying to get funding in another way.
I understand.
Yeah. It may be we have to come up with a patch in money, or we might have to do something to make it work. I think that it is so important to keep our citizens safe up there, that we've got to do something, and this is the first step toward that.
It's a start.
And since we have great cooperation from the county at this point, they're all in favor of helping us, we'll all work together, and I think we can get it done.
Sounds good.
May take some time.
You want a motionless resolution?
I do.
I would like to make a motion, we pass resolution number 2013-04.
Second. Any further discussion? Any discussion out there? Everybody understands what we're trying to do.
Does it include bicycles too, besides the foot traffic? And make sure that...
I think we're talking about a six-foot wide sidewalk.
You have a question?
Yes.
From where?
From 30th, 37th Street at least, and possibly from 30th.
Possibly from where?
30th. We would like for the sidewalk to go all the way from 30th up there, but what we're talking about right now is from 37th North. Remember, this is so new construction must put a sidewalk in front of their place before they can get a permit to construct. Now is the time to do it, before everything gets developed. Sidewalk in front of the present places will have to be addressed in a different manner. Right, John?
Right. I think we can deal with the businesses and work stuff now.
John has been the instigator of this right in the beginning. He said, "We need a sidewalk up there." I said, "Let's go after it, John." We went after it, and then we found out that we were shot down because of the right-of-way. Then, when we get all this other interest, and even Walmart is considering helping us, we're excited about it. Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on this.
Councilwoman Chomel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
I think that's important, that when we go to the area planning, we can say that it was unanimous at city council, we want this recommended to the city.
John, what is Indiana code?
Well, that provides that a rezoning may begin at the request of a legislative body, like the city council or the county commissioners, or it may begin with the area plan commission itself. And in this case, we're doing it from the city council to the plan commission.
They'll go through all the steps to get it done for us.
They study it, appear in ordinance and so.
Hopefully, that'll come back to us very shortly for adoption. That will be an important ordinance at this point.
Yes. Thank you, John.
Pending ordinance 2993, this is a public hearing on additional appropriations, City Hall. This is to pay the $18,605 we paid to fix the electricity at Vistion. This money will come from the $200,000 payment from the company that's purchasing the building. But we have to have a public hearing, because it's coming out of the general fund, where the money went in the first place.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Since the next one's the same thing, can we take them together? I think we can.
It's legal fees, and I guess we could. Could we knock down? Yes.
Because if not, isn't that, this one comes out of $200,000 also?
They both do.
I would like to make a motion, we take votes together.
Pending ordinance 2993 and pending ordinance 2994, the first one is to pay for the electrical service up there, and the other one is to pay legal services for the negotiation of the contract. Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
This again is just advertisement, or?
No.
No, this has been advertised. It's ready to go. You gave us permission to advertise last time. I should have called for a public hearing. I'm sorry. Just, your motion's fine.
Not a problem.
Anybody out there have a comment on these two issues? None at all? Okay. Public hearing. Let the record show, we did have a public hearing. Okay. On pending ordinance 2993 and 2994, we'll have a roll call vote, and you're voting on both ordinances. First reading.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chomel?
Yes.
You have passed that on first reading, both ordinances. If you'd like to suspend the rules, we can consider both on third and final.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on pending ordinance 2993 and 2994 on suspension of rules. Only all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Nobody getting opposed? We can proceed, if you'd like to vote at third and final reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance 2993 and 2994. One for $18,605, other contractual electrical, the other is $17,430, legal services. Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chomel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yep.
You have passed that on third and final reading, and those two bills can be taken care of. We have pending ordinance 2995. This, if you've read it, is a way that we conserve water. This is a kind of a boilerplate thing that cities are required to have. Some of this really doesn't pertain to us, because we have so much water, but it's something that we have to have in place in order to be eligible for grants, federal help with projects. We have to have one of these effective water plans in place. So, this ordinance, 2995, can be adopted tonight, or you could pass it on first reading and let it lay over. Does it have to be publicized, John? Is that to be put in paper?
That's my knowledge, Mayor.
There's no penalty. Well, there are penalties. There are penalties, John.
Are you sure?
It could be.
I think, I think we got...
I'm sorry, there are. Section 9.
Yes, we got a published.
Worth of penalties for this violation.
Would that limit our water that we use, or what is it?
In a, in a draw, the city council, or the mayor, or the border works could limit sprinkling, and could do a lot of different things.
Car washing.
Kind of like what they had do in Indianapolis.
It just says could do, doesn't say they have to do.
We got plenty of water, haven't we?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Gobs of water.
Do we have to ditch it?
We have to have this in place in order to be eligible for federal grants and federal money, and on our projects that we do in our stormwater, this has to be put in place. It's a, it's kind of a boilerplate, every city's got to have it. It's a plan, and if there's a water shortage, what would you do? That's what this is, it's a plan. Be glad to give you a copy of it.
Came to light last summer during a drought.
Absolutely.
Period.
But even last summer, although it would probably be foolish for us to be watering our lawns and everything, we had plenty of water. In a dry year like last...
Oh, shut up, water off. I like the water. Water, I thanks.
Yeah, in a dry year like last year, I think we have looked at this, we could pump 10 to 14 million gallons a day easily, and we don't pump a third of that. But we have to have this ordinance in place. So I think what I'd like to do tonight, we'll pass it on first reading, let it lay over, we'll publish it, and then we'll look at it again. Is that okay, John?
Sure.
Would someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance, or pending ordinance 2995.
Second.
Okay. On pending ordinance 2995, this ordinance that affected management of water furnished by the city of Connersville, Indiana. I think we better have a roll call vote, it's an important.
Councilwoman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chomel?[1689.87] Councilman Knobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
You have passed that on first reading. With your permission, we'll let that lay over until the next meeting, and we'll publish this so that the citizens go about it. Okay? Okay. The last piece of information I have before we move on is about your pictures. The Vicentennial is putting out a program book. At the meeting, they went like this. And they want pictures of all the different people that work in the city, and I think we've accomplished most of that except you guys are TV3. I don't think, we gotta get your picture yet. Tom's gonna get it Wednesday. We got everybody else. They got you. They're gonna get you next Wednesday. Okay. Got the piece today. So just keep that in mind. On the public forum, is there anybody like to bring anything up tonight? You wanna come forth, Dale? Good to anoint you tonight. Dale brought me a little problem this last week.
Oh, no problems.
We have a monitor in the second ambulance that is out of order. It's got two things wrong with it, and we had a bill for $2,700 to repair it. Or we could enter in an agreement and buy a new one like we did for that number one ambulance at $30,000. Julie and I recommend that we just fix this one. It's in our second ambulance. And we're probably gonna have to look at buying an ambulance sometime this year, early next year. And so I talked with Dale. Julie and I just think that's what we should do. We just want you to back us up. Dale, you wanna speak on it?
It's a Phillips monitor. We've had it about six years now, and we've had trouble off and on. We've replaced one of them already. That's the one we bought last year. And this second one is now backing up like the first one has. We've had it back in the factory, I believe it's been four times in the last six to eight months. And this has been the most major expense on it so far. This one's been right out, $3,000, it's $2,747, so. It's just something we're gonna have to look at eventually doing.
If you folks think that Julie and I are wrong, but we think we ought to go ahead and spend the $2,700 and repair it, because like you said, it isn't second ambulance. If you're having a heart attack, the second one's important as the first one. If you have any other different feelings, I'd like to hear it now.
We looked at a grant for that ambulance, didn't we?
We're still waiting. We haven't heard any.
Should hear by March 1st.
On it yet, so we're still in the running.
Your Honor, do you have any idea about when we might find something out about the grant?
By March 1st is what we're told.
March the 1st. I didn't.
And when you get a new ambulance, has it completely got all the monitors and stuff in it?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Bear truck.
So regardless, we're gonna need to get a monitor.
If this works out right, I'm hoping we can amend the grant and then request a monitor with it. It depends on what the cost of the ambulance is by the time the grant comes through.
We recently bought a new monitor, you said.
We bought one, I believe it was last year for.
What are the payments on that? How do we?
We paid it. We just bought it outright. It was like almost $35,000.
We split that with the county. And also, I gotta tell you, the county has cut their budget. They used to have a budget of $300,000 for EMS. They cut it to $275,000. And I'm negotiating with them. I think they'd be willing, if we had to have an ambulance or a monitor, I think they would come back and help us. They understand how important EMS is. But I just think that to buy us some time, I think we'd be better off to repair it this time. But if you think differently, let me know.
Well, if we get the grant for the ambulance, it would free up the money, then we could afford to buy one.
Your Honor, I would like for us to do what Dale was requesting on the pair.
Second.
We have kind of a verbal resolution here tonight that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That backs you up, Dale. Go ahead and do it. Any other business under public forum? Do you wanna tell them what you're doing, or do they know what you're doing? The Board of Works approved his plan today, so you guys will have to pay for it. John, you're in on this. I guess you talked with him.
We got Dixie cups and strings. I've talked to Tom, and we've discussed a way of doing this. I'd like to start, like the mayor said, talk to the Board of Works today. We was having trash, a large trash, whatever you wanna call it, once a month instead of once a year. Excuse me. And what you have to do is you have to call, call in the street department, tell them what you got. You can have three to four items. They have to be couches and bed things and so forth. Can't be appliances. It can't be.
Tires.
Yeah, tires, batteries, paints, those types of things, or construction waste. They're just, you know, trying to get the, trying to get the couches off the porches. That's just one way of putting it. And it's so sad, but so true. So we're just trying to help the folks that don't have a way to get rid of their stuff. And so if you call us, we'll make arrangements. What we'd like to do is you call during the month, and in the last week of the month, we'll see what kind of a schedule we got. Instead of going up and down the streets, we can go to your house, your house, your house, because we got your addresses. We got a place to go. So that cuts down a lot of the time of this scouring through the city, trying to find stuff to pick up. But you have to call. We need to know kinda what you're doing, so we know what we're doing when we come to pick it up. And it's a thing in the county, or the board, give me three months' trial to see how this works. If everybody takes care of this situation, I think it works out well for everybody and be less problems. And we won't have the town with stuff up and down every street for a month trying to get it cleaned up, because we always try to do it around before or after Easter. We've got the Vicentennial this year, so I'm just trying to get a jump on it if we start it this month. So that's.
Anybody have any objection to that?
No, Your Honor, if I may. David and I talked about this five years ago when Dave was on City Council, and I think it's an awesome idea. He wanted to come up with a way we can get the community cleaned up and not look like Tobacco Row. Because unfortunately, presently, if we tell people it's gonna start in two weeks on Saturday, tomorrow, they start setting stuff out. So I think it's, I think it's, I think it's an awesome idea. The cost is not that prohibitive, but I think it's a great idea.
We can take the money throughout the course of the year instead of having one with $6,200, whatever. I forget the number today that goes there.
Yeah, but.
Something, something that idea.
It was less than $75,000.
But you know, when you call, we'll find out what you're doing. We'll talk back and forth what you're doing and ask you to set it out the weekend before, not set it out today for the end of the week.
It's gonna be the last week of the month.
Yeah, last week of the month. So I guess it's plenty of time, gives people plenty of time to call us, and we get something set up and, you know, we can kinda tell if it's, you know, look in our list, if it's gonna be Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. Some months will be half a dozen, some months there might be 40 people. You just never would know. So it's just something we have to look at during the course.
Mayor, I think that'd be an excellent idea, because what I'm running into with some of these properties and trash around the property, a lot of these people don't have trucks for anybody to haul them off, and I think that would be an excellent idea if we had something like that to where they could call and advise.
The Board of Works voted today to do it for three months, to give it a try. So we'll start the last week in February. The paper wants to put that in. They called the street department, tell them what their address is, and that they want something picked up during the last week of the month.
Channel 3 would be good, too.
What?
Channel 3.
We'll have it on channel 3. Yep.
But we don't want your stuff set out. You call us tomorrow. We don't want your stuff set out tomorrow, please. Wait, give us some time. Give it to the end of the month, and you know, if you, we've done this before in previous years. If you need help, call us, and we'll try to get it to the curb for you, or whatever you need. We'll get a group to volunteer some time maybe and do something that way. But we just, we wanna help and clean up the community.
All right. That's information only.
Thank you. Thank you.
Old business? Anybody got any old business they wanna bring up? Ms. Laney's business, we'll start with you, Nancy. You got any problems in your district? I will ask each one of you to, we're gonna do our blacktopping different this year. I've talked with other cities, and instead of bidding so much a ton, we're gonna bid so much a job. So I need to know the streets we're gonna do, say we're gonna do Grand Avenue from here to here. I'll give that to the bid, and we'll bid that project. And he runs into trouble. That's his problem. We've been bidding tonnage, and then they'll get, they'll dig down and they'll dig through the street and say, "Oh, we're gonna have to charge you more." So other cities are doing this. It's so much per job. They look at it. So in your districts, I need to know by the end of February if you've got streets you want to be blacktopped. You can call Melissa. She'll put them on the list.
Mr. Mayor, you should ask us if we have any streets that don't need to be blacktopped.
Now, you know what we're doing. We take the worst streets. But look at your district. Dave, you look all over town. You get to ride the whole town. Who else is that large?
I am. What about the milling? How do we determine whether a street needs to be milled or not?
When we bid it, we'll look at it and we, they tell us.
Okay.
And then we'll bid it.
All right.
And it's gonna take a little more work on the bid, but I think we'll get more for our money. Last year, we got into, we started doing things, and we had trouble. And then it was all on us.
Yes.
Started with you, Nancy. So in your district, look around. I know your district. You need some streets.
And I know it, and I'll find it. They're there.
Nancy's always the one, the first one to give me streets, so. Did you have anything else, Nancy?
No, I'm just, when the snow melts, I'll know better.
Yeah, well, we're gonna start fixing potholes. In fact, we've already borrowed stuff from county, and we're fixing potholes. Yeah, we got a lot of potholes.
We had two trucks out last year.
I turned one in, Dave, also.
I'm sorry.
I turned one in. Yes, you got it. Thank you.
Mr. Creech, you got anything?
Yes, I did.
Cool.
Two things.
Cool.
Connersville swim team was very successful over the weekend. Congratulations are in order. Also, Mike Bonham's wrestling team, same thing. Congratulations are in order, and I'm good.
I don't have anything.
Look at your street.
I will.
I just wanna say, you know, we've been through this trash, the new trash pickup for a couple of weeks, and I think it's looking, it's doing well. And I'm just glad this comes. I think everybody seems to like it.
Our men are doing great. There was 650 cans before 1 o'clock the other day.
Really?
Yeah.
Last Thursday, you already did over 1,000.
That's impressive.
Yeah, it's getting better all the time.
It seems to work good. I think it's gonna, we're really seeing a big difference when the winter breaks here.
In my report, I'll tell you, little glitches we've had, but we've worked them out. Brad?
Well, speaking of sports, the basketball team won two games over the weekend, so very happy for them.
I hear all this stuff about momentum and everything. Do they win because you're up there giving them momentum?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Is there anything else, Fran?
No, sir.
Gary, you're not here. Okay.
Yeah, I get a reason.
Molly, do you have any?
I don't really have anything. As far as the trash, I believe it's going well, too. I have the east side, and I also drive there to go to work, and I believe their day got changed to Friday, and I noticed that it took some of the folks a little longer to figure that out. And I saw less, less cans sitting out today left over from Friday's pickup, so. And hopefully, when the weather starts getting better, I just really hope that like neighbors help neighbors, you know, orienting the cans. And I notice, and keeping the lids shut, too, because when rain and snow gets in those cans, it makes it heavier. So we don't wanna break the arm of the truck. But you know, help your neighbors.
We had, I had some new stickers made last week, and it tells different things that you can do to help the situation. And you can check the box, and it'll tell you what you need. I had a guy that day complain about his trash wasn't picked up. He said, "Was there an orange sticker on the lid?" He said, "Yeah, well, what was that, what was that for?" I said, "It tells you, it tells you what day your trash is picked up." And he said, "I didn't read it." And I'm the fat guy that's walking down the road putting them on, you know, and he reads it. So there you go. But we're working. You know, we talked to him on the phone, and he understood now, and he said, "We're fine," so.
Can they still swap out and get a smaller can, or is it too late?
It's never too late, but we just don't have any left.
Oh, okay.
But we got them on order.
We got them ordered, but right now I've got a list, and we reassure people, it's, "When I get them, you'll have them."
Okay. What if, what if perhaps somebody wants a small can, and then maybe the residence changes, you know, five years from now, and that new family wants a big can?
We'll switch.
Swap it out again. Okay.
I've already had some. It's got these small cans that have already asked for large ones.
Yeah.
The small one wasn't big enough afterwards. So there's just all kinds of things that have changed during the course of this, and still will change. So in the Board of Works, he'll probably mention here in a minute, but the Board of Works, there's some different things that that's, that can help to the problems that we do have, so.
David did have a question for you.
It's ongoing.
How was recycling? Has it picked up?
I, I'll have a better feel for it on Thursday, but it's staying about the same. It hasn't really increased, but the bags seem to be increasing, so I'm thinking that should, we're doing around eight right now, eight ton. So I'm thinking we should see eight and a half, nine, 10 real soon.
I'd be willing to time. I think it'll save time for the recycling.
Because that's one of the first things. In fact, I brought bags down to City Hall for Julie, when people come down to get their second toter, you know, to see about one. We've got bags here to give them and try to, we're really trying to promote.
You really wouldn't have the need, wouldn't have the need for a second toter. You would recycle. The city provides you with these bags. It would take away probably half your trash if you recycle.
So that's the first thing when they complain about the tote, not being, getting their stuff in there. That's the first thing I say, "Do you recycle?" And I've had some. I said, "Do you recycle?" "Yeah." So when you talk to think about it, it makes me wonder. So bless their hearts. But there's just all kinds of things that happen, and people will get adjusted, and we'll learn. We'll learn.
I had one guy called, "We're very angry at you over the second toter."
Just one?
Yeah. But I asked him the same thing. I said, "Do you recycle?" I said, "Because I don't fill the can." And I said, "I have two or three bags of recycling on me." He said, "What, no?" But I said, "The bags are free." I said, "But you gotta go on a street party."
That's about it. You gotta control them somehow. You can't just put them out there on a street corner. You gotta control them. We spend $50,000 of your own bags, so just come over. We're glad to sign your name and address.
I had one recycle in a huge recycle bag, but then he put it in the tote.
We've had some of that. We've had a little variation of everything you can imagine.
They couldn't even close it. It was so full.
Another thing we had problems with, it was the lids and so forth. The other day, it was so windy, and you know, people were calling me, and you know, the lids won't sit down. Should I put a brick on it? No. So you flip that thing up, and a brick knocks the windshield out of it. No, don't put a brick on. It's just part of the, part of the animal. It's just gonna blow up with, we've had some pretty strong wind the last two or three weeks. So yeah, don't, please don't put a brick on it. That's all I need to come to you.
Anybody else under? We had a couple instances. We've been finding out that we've been cheating people. We've been charging them too much for collecting trash. In the 60s and 70s, a lot of people bought these homes, especially downtown area, and they made two apartments, three apartments out of a house. And they were listed that way down at the assessor's office, so we charged them twice or three times for trash. Now we find out, as you all know, you can't rent those places, so a lot of people have just abandoned renting those places. Took the water meter out. It sits empty, or they began to use the old house, and they were paying for trash. So we've been looking at those. We've had people come in and complain. So what we decided today, we're gonna take each one of those instances, listen to it at the Board of Works, and try to treat people right. And it's really easy. If they got one toter, they charge, pay $10. If they got two toters, they pay 20 bucks. You know, if you have four apartments in there, and you want four toters, then you pay 40 bucks. And it's pretty easy. When we built the ordinance and had you pass it, there was one word we left out, and John, I'm missing the word. You wanna put occupy.
Yeah. Yeah, this needs to be tightened up a little bit, which doesn't surprise me at all, because that usually comes when you start putting it in use, then you see where the problems are. And we need to tighten it up a little bit with a couple amendments on the ordinance and some, perhaps some, a couple, two, three changes on the refuse policy. Primarily to make sure that it's understood by everyone that we're gonna be dealing with occupied residential units and not unoccupied ones. And that's one of the problems, but we'll, I'll tighten it up and bring it to you.
So we'll be asking you to look at that, but you know, let it run a while so we can see where the little things are. And then another thing, we made a mistake, and I'll admit we did. When we hired the company to put the toters out, it was a mistake, because they sent college kids in here with a truck and trailer. They just dropped off in front of every house. Some of those houses were vacant. Some of them need to be tore down. Some of them had an apartment in the back, an apartment in the front. I had a little lady in this morning, and she said, "I never got a toter." They dropped one off, but there were two apartments, and the back lady took it, the front lady didn't get one, so we had to deliver one up to her. So all these little things we're fixing and have to deal over, we would have delivered the toters with our own people, because they know the town, they know the houses. After all, our trash people knew where there was trash. They could have delivered them, and we done it. But we didn't have the time to collect trash six on two trucks and deliver toters, too. So we hired this company to do it for us. It was a mistake. I take blame for it.
They did try. They tried hard to do it, but it's just hard to say, was somebody living there or not, and you know, I've taken totes away, too, and.
We had one, and they went over to our neighbors and took theirs and brought it to us, so then we ended up two.
Mayor, are they numbered for that house?
They're numbered and recorded to the house.
Just because of some of the things that have happened, we have kind of a record of everything that's gone on, but I'd like to purge the system this coming summer. I like to go back through, and it wouldn't take long to verify.
They were just pulling them off the truck and throwing them out in front of houses, and I mean, I mean, it was so loud that I heard a thump, and I wondered what that was.
We'll know how well we did when we purged the system. But what's happening now, you can tell who has trash to pick up, because they got a toter. They don't have a toter, we don't pick up trash. So it's hard to cheat, you know? It's just really hard. It's hard for us to cheat them. It's hard for them to cheat us.
They are starting to learn to put it on the ground. It's not working.
Now, we're not ducking anything on what's in the toter.
There are.
Anyway, so much for trash. We're working it out. It's coming along fine. The Roberts Building, we started Monday on, last week, Monday on the plumbing, and all the hot, cold water lines are in, the bathrooms, kitchen. All the drains are in, and started on a dry. and started on the drywall, drywall in the bathrooms and the kitchen.
You told me, and I forgot, when's the dedication, when you shoot the dedication?
Dedication will be on June 14th, Flag Day.
For the Roberts Building?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that will be, the city council will be doing that dedication, we got a nice ceremony planned, that's part of the Bicentennial, but it's not a Bicentennial activity, the council and the mayor and all of those that have worked on it, I want to be a part of that.
What day of the week is that?
I think it comes on, Melissa, Wednesday, I think, if I remember right.
June 14th?
Yeah.
It's a Friday?
Friday, okay, so we might do it on Saturday or something, but when it gets a little closer and we see we're gonna make it, I don't see why we wouldn't, I mean, I really don't, we've had really good luck, we've got all the material in now for the curtains, for the curtains on the stage, we started sanding the stage area today, and painting.
Didn't the kids start today?
Oh, yeah, the kids have been up there, they've done the electrical, yeah, they're coming back, we got all the woodwork painted, they'll start putting baseboard down this week, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't, unless something terrible, I mean, the heating's all in, we haven't started the heating, because I don't want any dust in the new units, we warm it up a little bit with the old furnace, we got a big old pipe like this that shoots out of the floor, and we just keep it warm enough for the workers to work in there, but I'm hoping it'll be ready. The Dignitaries Luncheon will be in there on the 28th of June, put that on your book, write the 28th of June, all of you will be expected to be there, there's a Dignitaries Luncheon, I think it's at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, after that, the entire city council will go to the Canal House, and a circuit rider on a horse will bring a proclamation in to be read on the front porch of the Canal House, after that luncheon, and after that takes place, there'll be some music, and then there's a light show, don't know what it is, laser, laser light show in the parking lot, that's the first day, that's the opening day, all of you will be involved in that, you'll all get invitations, and very important, so don't plan your vacation from the 28th of July till the 7th of June, so, right?
June 14th, you say?
July 7th, July 7th, that's when I always planned mine, can't do it this year, and there's other things that you folks will be participating in, so keep those days open, we need to talk about the city somehow building a float, the City of Connersville absolutely should have a float in the Bicentennial Parade, and the Board of Works are gonna have to start working on that and come to you, and we're gonna have to work together, because it would really look bad if everybody in town, and I'm going now to churches, I was at the Latter Day Saints Church on Sunday, they are in the process of designing and drawing their float, I was at the Methodist Church on Sunday, they are in the process of designing and building their float, so I know floats are being built, it would really look bad if the City of Connersville didn't have a float.
Do you have any float builders on town?
Well, we're going to put Mr. Nobby in charge of that.
I suck at that.
All in favor?
Well, don't you think, Mr. Nobby, don't you teach what we used to call shop out there, what do you teach?
Nope, I sure don't, teach egg.
Hey, that's got a lot to-
They don't build floats.
I can paint some plans, but I don't make floats.
We're gonna have to-
I can make a root beer float.
Well, if any of you wanna volunteer, we're gonna have to get this done, I've been thinking about it, it'll probably fall down on you a lot, Dave, get, build a weld up something over there.
Make a weld.
That's gonna have to be done, Ruby, maybe you'll help us, huh? Stick flowers on a float, chicken wire, and you put that little Kleenex in, you know, I know how to do it, I used to build them.
There you go, you're in charge.
That's out of order. Anything else we need to talk about tonight? I, I do want an executive meeting with you, how would it be if we did it on the 19th, meet early, like at, what do we usually do, at 6 o'clock, and then coming here at 7? Would that be all right with you? I wanna bring you up to date on where we are on economic development, there's so many of these things that are top secret, the companies won't let us tell you anything, and I'd like to get you in a room and talk to you.
No, that's the same day as the Board of Works, right?
Board of Works is back on one of the calls.
We're back. This would be an executive session-
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Executive session for the purpose of economic development.
Will they give you enough time, Mayor, at 6?
6, oh, yeah, I just wanna, John and I'll bring you up to date where we are, is that okay with you, John?
Yes, sir.
Is that gonna be here?
It'll be in the conference room in there, so we'll meet at 6, and Melissa will send you out a notice.
When is our meeting at Miller Village, or, not the Miller Village, but the Roberts?
Fort, probably be in March. We're almost clean enough up there now to do it, but I gotta wait on them to be able to broadcast from up there, when will that be, March?
March.
Ben's working on it, they're gonna have, they use our antenna and beam the signal down here, I'd like to meet up there in March if we could.
Got a question.
Yeah.
Is everything still progressing okay on the solid building up there?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna talk about, we're gonna bring you right up to date on where we are, give us, John and Pete and I, some insight of what you'd like to see take place, there's been some developments, and the companies, both the company that's purchasing and another company, want this strictly say nothing, but I think that in order to make good decisions, you folks need to know what's going on.
And that's why we chose not to know who it was, even though people keep asking us.
So we'll have that little executive session on economic development, so, Treasuries, or, Treasuries Report.
I'd best stop talking some fund reports.
You've done good, Julie.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for Julie on the fund report? None appearing? I don't have anything else, if you'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
The one that said-
Everybody did it, well, who made the motion? We have a motion on the floor to adjourn, all in favor say aye, any opposed?
Hey, Dave.
You need to adjourn.